I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our real call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Ideman.
Here.
Alderman Reining.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Here.
Mayor Weal Forum.
Very good. Move for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we have a personal appearance tonight. Ms. Nancy, you're up.
I'm up already.
Yes.
That's correct. And then the goal is for now?
That's fine.
All right. Thank you very much for inviting me.
Oh, wait a minute. You have to stay at the podium.
Oh, I had to spark up the bar. Okay. Am I short enough? Oh, this makes me feel official. Hello, my name is Nancy Cozine professionally. I'm from Farmington, Missouri. And for the past two years, I have been working with regional groups. And after returning from New York, I came back to this area and realized how beautiful the state of Missouri was. I worked for, as I said, I love New York. And one of the major things that the campaign had me do was to assess surroundings, trails, different things along that line, because New York is very much into regional planning. And so when I came back, I realized what great opportunities there was in this area. And it began with something called Iron Mountain. Iron Mountain was an incredible mountain. And I began to do research on it. Listen to this. It's about a mile broad at the base, 400 feet high, three miles long, and has the appearance of being composed of masses of iron ore. It has much more. It is literally a mountain of ore so pure, it yields 70 to 80% under the ordinary process of converting it into malleable iron. And so in exploring this, I met a gentleman called Robert Mueller. Actually Hank at Chamin, yeah, introduced me. He said, you have similar interests. And when I began to explore this mountain, I realized how many other opportunities there were. And Robert gave me this map. This map starts at St. Genevieve. The company, by the way, Mr. Sauer began this company in order to mine. He wanted to get the iron ore in the Iron Mountain. The problem was, the roads were so bad, quite frankly, mostly Indian trails, that the oxentines would get stuck in the mud, literally stuck in the mud. So Mr. Sauer suggested something called a wooden highway or a plank road. And so when Robert and I began to explore this, I found more maps. This is one actually from a group that I am now working with, and our team is called the Southeast Regional Planning Association. And this takes us from St. Genevieve over here, through Farmington over here, to Ironton, Pilot Knob, Arcadia. And in doing so, it revealed even more, more beautiful highways. From here, if I can see it right, from Fredericktown to Farmington is also the Trail of Tears. And there is more than just the Trail of Tears. It's the only place in the state that the Plank Road and the Trail of Tears juncture. But more than that, that Trail of Tears, because there are so many different tribes, including what was called the five civilized tribes, including Choctaw, Cherokee, not Osage, but Creek and others, that there were many different trails. So Caledonia began to ask if they could join our group as well. Now, Caledonia is technically out of our planning group, but in Washington County, it's doing great business, mostly St. Louis traffic. So we included them. And then we said, well, we need kind of an identification. So what happened was, Robert took the old logo from the Plank Road group, and he made it modern. So what you're seeing in the next page is our trial sign for the DOT. And that's actually at a place called Limekill Road, which is a great road. Now, when we looked at roads, we considered a couple of things. And the next page that you have is the Bicentennial Commission. They've been very excited about this, because it's not a small project, it's a multi-city, multi-region project. And so that means it has great growth, especially considering something going on right now called the COVID. As we cannot go to Europe, since Canada seems unwidling to take us in, we have to live with ourselves. And so the more we began to develop, we began to have regional meetings, Dale Wright started attending. And he said, Nancy, you've got a great idea here. So you see the purpose. That is to organize and promote an inter-county highway route based on the original Plank Road, and shows the significance of these highways. Why is that important? When we don't have to redraw the map, we go to the DOT. We can basically follow some of the original roads. But more than that, when you look at this area, it has so many things going for it. So that's why the highways of history, because it changes demographically, so much so. St. Genevieve is going to be a national park, associated with national parks, very, very important in terms of history and historic significance, right? But if you go through Farmington, Farmington's now developing into most of a shopping, commercial area, right? And it also touches base with the Trail of Tears coming up from Fredericktown. Fredericktown, where the Confederate groups disappeared after Pilot Knob, their failed attempt at Pilot Knob, ah, that's another angle. So we have Pilot Knob, we have St. Joe, we have Han Park, Elephant Rocks, I'm trying to think of it, Johnson Shut-ins, you have Pickle Springs. I mean, the parks are so very, very important in all this whole picture, because people can stay overnight in camp. They can take their time, they don't have to worry about getting in or getting out of hotels, and these parks are outstanding. So the parks are involved now. And one of the parks that's helping us out in particular is the mineral park or the mining park, which is in Lettington. I hope some of you have gone there, because the specimens from this area in terms of mining are world-class. They're absolutely beautiful. The whole point in all of this, highways of history, is to get people to come here, stay here longer, spend their money here, that's the chief, one of the chief things, and help restart jobs. We need to do it on a basis where people can be close enough to St. Louis, yet far enough away. And we get the St. Louis traffic, but also we want them to come in from Cape Girardeau. We're right in the middle of opportunity, as I call it. And it's an easy trip. We're near Jackson. Where, you know, when you look at it, it's just something that really has a lot going for us. And here's what else you began to notice. And this is one reason why Farmington immediately adopted this, because we can perpetuate our own events. Farmington likes to do beer, blues, and barbecue. And we get great crowds from St. Louis, but recently we've been getting more and more crowds from the Cape area, young vendors. And that's the other thing that we're really very, very interested in, getting new, young vendors who want to try something new, but they can't do it in Cape, it's too big, right? They can't do it in some of the other cities, it's too far away. Kansas City's too far away. St. Louis is a trip for them as well. So we want those young vendors to come here and take a look at what we have. And when you look at what's going on right now in Arcadia, anybody have an idea what's going on in Arcadia? Have you ever heard of extreme cycling? These kids are going up on their bicycles on mountains that are like this, Up Shepherd Mountain, straight up that huge mountain. Then they come and they do twists and turns, they're doing all kinds of unbelievable acrobatics on those bicycles. And I'm going to tell you, it's already drying, I wish I had the magazine that has a front of it, that a lot of the sports magazines are showing that kind of what they call extreme cycling. So when you take a look at what we can have as a geographic and a demographic mix in terms of our area, and it's not a big area, in some respects, in other respects, it's a great opportunity, because it does lead to Cape, it does lead to St. Louis, it does lead to an opportunity here for us to work together as a region to really start promoting this, this as an exciting place to come and spend a day, two days, three days. And I think it'll be something that will be, quite frankly, and you can see the endorsement so far, we have Pilot Knob, Ironton, Farmington, Caledonia, as I said, they're much more willing, don't say this too loudly, to work with us than those other guys up there. And that's what they said, they like us very much. And I have appointments with Arcadia, with extreme bicycling thing, and then with Fredericktown. Fredericktown, where the Confederate troops disappeared after the Battle of Pilot Knob. Fredericktown, that has a huge mining history, Mine La Motte, became from France, 1790s, I think. Again, history that just continues to grow and grow and go. So we're asking for your endorsement. By the way, our resolution is making its way through the state legislature right now. Dale Wright has been very helpful in terms of introducing that. So we're moving this on two fronts at one time. Senator Romine took a look, he said, okay, we can sign onto this. Because it promotes local foods, it promotes local venues, it promotes local businesses. But on the other hand, it says, spend a day here, then go on, take a look at some of the other opportunities around here. So that's what we want. It's called a stay vacation in terms of vacation types, and it means come close to us, stay close to us, but you don't have to go to China, you don't have to go to, in fact, you can't go to Europe, you can't, well, you can't go to Canada, you know, why don't you stay here and have a great time? Basically, that's what we're saying. And so the mayor has listened to my plea for regional planning. And as I said, our group is now working with the Southeast Regional Planning Association. And that's why you see the highway commissions listed. Both the Farmington or St. Francis Highway Commission and St. Genevieve have endorsed this project as well, and they're willing to work with us in terms of putting up the signage that Robert has created. That's it? That's my shtick? I mean, that's my presentation.
I've met a couple times with Nancy, Happy and I met, and that's going to be good for the whole region and good for St. Genevieve. So what we'll probably have is a proclamation is what you're looking for, right?
Correct. If you don't mind doing a proclamation, and it's pretty much written, it's what's being presented right now in the state legislature. And it simply, it says everything from extreme bicycling to farming, you know, to local activities, ceremonies, museums, a lot in terms of museum development and different things along that line. So we've taken a look at what every county is offering, and we've incorporated it.
Yeah, very cool.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm having a great time with these maps. I want to show you this real fast. Look at this. Look at all the minerals and all the, isn't this unbelievable? And people said to me, oh, Iron Mountain, they've mined that out a long time ago. No way, Jose. We took a tour up there, they're mining, mining, mining. I'm telling you, they're mining, mining, mining. And so that's our next step, is to go to donors and ask for their support in putting up these signs. But the signs will lead you all around the area, and it also is meant to complement the signage that you have already. So I hope you like our signs. That's what Robert designed. Yep, that's Robert's sign. We tried a couple, and the one sign that you see is up there, is already, Modon has looked at it, and it's been approved by them. It's the green one, we decided to change the background, top it a little bit more. But it's on the Limekill Road, which is a great road. But that is, says everything to me. It's got beautiful rolling hills, unbelievable vistas, you know, charming little homes, and it really says so much about what people and stuff just mean on the highway all the time. Take it off track. And it goes to something called the Flash Cafe. Have you tried their Sunday specials? Unbelievable. In fact, I've been telling everybody in Farmington, what are you doing up here? Go to the Splash Cafe, they never stop feeding you. Well, just aside, just on a side. But that's an advantage, don't you think? That's it.
Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you so much, guys.
Okay, well, that takes us to our city administrator's report.
I've given you an updated report at your seats. I didn't know if the committee wanted to talk about the city hall remodel, or did you want me to cover it here?
Cover it.
Okay. So I sent this out early, I've updated it. We met with Steve Bacon, no relation to Kevin Bacon. And he's, we've got a revised plan, and will now work on establishing a budget. We're looking at a three-phase construction project, so that we can break it into pieces that I think we can afford each year, or look at affording each year, that we couldn't do as a, as a single project. So I think the, as I remember the estimates that came in, or the, what am I trying to say? What came in from the contractors before was about $400,000. So splitting that up into three, three parts, we'll probably split it in half to begin with, because the police departments can be the most involved. And then you've got two other sections here, and then on the city hall side, that'll probably be $100,000 each. You'll have a little more expense in mobilization, but we can afford that each year to do that. And we've looked at the separation between those, those areas, and we can do that without affecting the other areas, pretty much. I mean, there'll probably have to be some corrections, some issues that we'll have to resolve, but, and the biggest thing's going to be the bathrooms to start off with, but we'll figure it out, we'll make it, make it work. But it looks like that's the way to go. I just need to get a number from Mr. Bacon, so we can put it into the budget, and then I'll bring it to you, and you'll decide yea or nay whether you want to pursue it or not. So that was item one. Item two, the board had talked to Greg Lottis from Lakeland about wanting to have the city do some reviews of the IT system. We just got together about that yesterday, he's starting to get that coordinated. One of the questions I have is, do you want a board committee to sit down and talk about how we want to look at the IT system and how we want to pursue that? Whether we're looking for an IT company, whether we're going to purchase it individually, keep the same company? Do you want to put a committee together? Do you want staff to do it? I've met with one IT representative, kind of gone through what their processes are that can benefit the city, so I don't, but I don't know what the board is, what the board is expecting.
I'm just wondering if this wouldn't be similar to the insurance committee that we were talking about formulating for the budget, if this would be people we could use for the same thing? You know, we were talking about having, so if we did this board, it could probably be the same one that's used for the insurance coordination and things of that nature. I'm just throwing it out there. And it's also a good idea, if we're going to work with the IT systems, right, that we also look at those professional development plans that they had as well, so that one committee could tackle all that. So it could be an ongoing thing. And if you wanted to do a committee, I'd volunteer for that committee.
And what I was trying not to do is, you know, have-
Bob said you'd volunteer too. And Bob.
Wasn't trying just to put one group of individuals kind of spread it out.
That's great. I'm just thinking the same kind of idea for all things, kind of an insurance committee. Beautiful.
Yeah. So if you want to, we can put a committee together tonight, we can talk about it at the next work session, put something together. I have money budget for the next year, it just depends on where we decide we want to put it. And I think that was, would be where the IT committee could say, this is where we think we need this to be done. So-
We're going to have a work session the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Well, let's do, let's put that, let's, let's talk, put that on the list to talk about at the next meeting.
Okay.
Is it okay with everybody?
That's great.
And the other item I wanted to cover is item five. We had talked to the Trotmans at the last work session, they are now moving forward to deed over that section of property that includes the fence and the trail out at the, out of Valley Springs Park. So that will be completed probably within the next couple of weeks. So they were worried about potential liability, that if something happened while they owned that property. So we're going to get that cleared up. It'll be a small, separate piece, it won't be part of the larger piece, but it will be dedicated to the city, or deeded to the city. So I talked to St. Genevieve Abstract, and they're working on the deed at this point, getting that put together, and we'll get it changed over. So any questions, anything else that I've got on that sheet? If not, I'm good. You're good? Good.
Okay.
I have a quick question for you, as far as the levy committee, were you able to meet with or orchestrate that with Mark? You said you were going to work on the levy, the wildlife? Where are we on that?
We just got information today that I passed on to Mark, and he's going to have a, have a chance to review it, and then we're going to start that process. So we're moving it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Takes us to Gary.
Hey. Evening, here. We got that one reporting, what it means. Bow and Weedy, and Bow and Weedy, and Bow and- Finished repairing on the story, the storm grain in Valley Springs, leveled a few graves with cemetery, it's seated. Did some work on the three bridges in Valley Spring Park. Asphalt repairs on Hillcrest. Worked on the installation of the playground at Pinkley Park, it's about 95% complete. Repaired some streetlights downtown, sprayed weeds, and put riprap in a ditch up on Main Street where it washed the edge of the road. What'd you ever figure out on the hole in the road on Main Street? What was happening? It's a cupboard pipe, it's unknown where it went. Talking to Steve, we think that there was a little catch basin on the other side of the road that either got eliminated or covered with the sidewalk project. So we're digging, we're going to put a catch basin in, just to make a drain on that side of, at the sidewalk, to get the water across.
Gary, one of your favorite questions would be with regards to streets. I may have missed something, so forgive me if I have. Have we put together the list of streets that we're going to focus on this year yet?
Well, yeah, I'm working on a list, but I don't know how much focus there's going to be on that this year.
There's going to be no street work this year.
Okay.
Not for this budget.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to hold that, because we technically spent our money when Jokers finished up after the getting out, into this budget here. Yeah, so we're going to push it into next year, but we've got a number of street projects with water lines that are going in that we need to, need to focus on too.
Okay.
Which are pretty substantial too.
Right.
Hi, Gary. And here in Mycat Park, at the restaurant building there by the basketball courts, it's worth done. Do you have a round moved down there?
Yeah.
Is there a estimate on that, that they're going to be pushed down?
Probably one day this week, if it's going to stay dry now, or next week rather, since we're already at the end of this week.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Takes us to Chief Steiger, Kenny.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, buddy.
Biggest thing that we've got going on is our regular maintenance, and our call load is starting to increase again. We were down quite a bit during the height of the COVID stuff. We did get the funding for those two grants that I applied for, and most of that equipment is in, I'm waiting on a couple of things. So we should be trained on that, and be putting that in service in the next few weeks. And we brought the guys back in and started doing in-house trainings again. We were doing video trainings for a couple of months, trying to keep everybody separated out, and now it's starting to bring the guys back in. We did a walk through of El Torero the other night, so we're starting to get the guys back together and doing things as a team again, instead of separate. Yeah, yeah, El San Felipe.
Chief, how do your numbers look, as far as your volunteers? How do the numbers look?
We are still down three, and I've talked to Happy before, I've actually got some letters out to four guys, right now they're on probation, trying to renew their interest and letting them know that we're paying for insurances and things like that, and if they don't get active, then we're going to have to let them loose. It's not the best way to spend the taxpayer money, I have any inactive guys. We are desperate need of volunteers. We had a commercial first alarm yesterday morning, one of our local businesses, and we only had about five or six guys show up. I had extra trucks coming in from outlying departments, which would help, but when we got there, it wasn't big enough to really need them, so I canceled them. And we were able to handle what the guys had, but we're in desperate need of especially young guys.
And not to belabor this, but what other qualifications do they have to pass to become a volunteer parent?
Right now, we take anybody with even no experience, and within a period of a year, if we can get them there, we try to send them to firefighter one and two. We had a guy just completed it, he's waiting for his test results now. So we will pay for a state certification to bring them up to our level.
Great job. Great job.
While I'm thinking about two, I put it in there too, the bids for the lighting project are due tomorrow, or, yeah, tomorrow. So we should know something by your next board meeting of what we're recommending for purchase, and that we can get the project going. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tim. Can you just say it?
Good evening. You've got my report there, not a whole lot. We had a productive Heritage Commission meeting. You can see that we're working on the draft, requests or proposals for the grant that we won. Still looking for a building inspector, worked with Happy to put a couple ads and outlying papers and online at some regional, regional websites. And we had a productive planning and zoning meeting, so some of that will come up later this evening. That's about all.
For this inspector position, just for the record, can we just clarify for those watching and listening, what the hours are, what the qualifications are, in case they're interested, and can they contact you directly, or Happy? What are the qualifications that we're looking for?
Looking for experience in building trades or codes, you know, preferably ICC certified, but if not, we can work on that here in-house. Preferably some experience with customer service, working with the public. But that's about it, the hours as far-
Part-time, full-time?
It's part-time for sure, 16 to 24 hours a week. It's going to vary, if someone comes and says, you know, everything fits, but I can't do Tuesdays and Thursdays, then we'll make Mondays and Wednesdays work. You know, we'll make it work. But that's the gist.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to put it out there.
That's all right, I appreciate it. Anything else?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Toby's in the house.
I've been on the job for two weeks and a day, but I wanted to give you guys some information about the visits to the Welcome Center since it reopened in June, trying to give you a snapshot of the trend there, and relative to the years past also. Those numbers also were shared with the historic sites today. We had a meeting of the National Park Service, the Foundation for Restoration, French Colonial America, and Missouri State Parks. They've been coordinating walking tours on weekends that started on June 1st, and they continue those tours, two tours each day, Friday morning, Saturday morning, and Sunday morning. The Bicentennial Quilt was at the Welcome Center for about 11 days in the month of June, drew 135 visitors, including some from out of the county. We received coverage in advance in the papers in Jefferson County, St. Francis County, and Perryville County, and then also the Southeast Missouri, and had an online story about it as well. The Saturdays in St. Genevieve program will begin this week with the German band, and Deb Cameron is also going to be in town. And then on the 18th of July, we're going to have Dennis Strom out in town, and also Deb Cameron will be coming back. That is also the weekend of the traditional artisans showcase and sale at ASL Peter. So there'll be a lot of things going on the weekend of the 18th, including, I think, carts and lawn mowers, is that right? Let's see. We also have a Bluegrass Performer coming to town in August as part of the Saturdays in St. Gene program. The last thing I have, I was at the Welcome Center in Hannibal, or their 4th of July weekend. The state Welcome Center had brochures from St. Genevieve from 2011, so they're a little outdated. So I contacted them, and also contacted other Welcome Centers in the state, so I'll be sending out some updated brochures to them. Does anybody have any questions?
What is the latest year?
A year and a half, I want to say, but we're probably looking to do an update again.
I think the advisory committee is talking about that at the next few days. They do an update, I think, every two years. So they usually form like a subcommittee to go through everything. And it came up at our last meeting.
On a different topic, the landscaping of the Welcome Center, the last couple weeks has been really coming around, I don't know if you're up there doing it yourself.
Yeah, Mary Lee's has been, yeah, out there working like-
I really appreciate that, I know the COVID, I live right there, as you know, and people coming, that's our first phase to the city. It's starting to look really good, so thank you, Toby.
Yes, I'm hoping the bushes are addressed this week too, so.
Yes. I was going to do it myself, but.
Get out, it's so hot.
Thank you, Toby, I really appreciate it.
It's-
Thanks, Toby.
He's on mic, saying he knew it.
Moving on, is there any committee reports?
Bushes are addressed this week too, so.
Yes. I was going to do it myself, but.
Get out there. It's so hot.
Thank you, Toby. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Toby.
He's on mic saying he knew it.
Moving on, is there any committee reports? Nothing from planning and zoning deal? Oh, that's right. All righty. Uh, takes us, are there any public comments? Takes us to the consent agenda?
Who approved, man?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So that's going to, at 6:30, we're going to have a public hearing. The mayor and the board of City of St. Genevieve will hold a public hearing to consider a request from James Ferguson for a zoning amendment to allow operation of an RV park within a C1 general commercial district and a 1-1 light industrial district and consider special use permit to operate such a RV park in a parking lot on 30 North Main Street. Who's up?
Hi, good evening. Mike Fowler is here representing my father, Herb Fowler, and the other owners of the Audubon Redevelopment LLC, Mr. James, Jim Ferguson and his wife Mary Beth, Greg Ferguson and his wife Pat. And we're excited to propose to the board, um, RV parking area in the middle of downtown Historic St. Genevieve. You've got a very preliminary sketch, I think, in front of you there. We'd be happy to answer questions, but what we're looking at is, um, until we lay it out and have an engineer draw it up and get official drawings for you all, probably seven to 10 spots accommodating very, well, you know, Class A to Class C, so the large RV, bus-style RVs down through, uh, small campers. Um, it will be a temporary parking, you know, can't be there longer. We'll go through the rules and regulations we really haven't come up with yet, but it's obviously temporary parking, a nice spot for them. It'll be, it'll be a nice place downtown with, right now, it's planned for all three utilities, water, sewer, and electric hookup. Pull-through slots is what is kind of the latest plan. We changed it a little bit since the plan, uh, if you, if any of yous talked to anybody that was on the planning and zoning that met last week, that preliminary plan had a retention wall down the middle of it with some parking. There's an elevation there that falls off the back side of the parking lot and it goes into the gravel. And we were thinking a retention wall through there, some parking on top and some parking down below. Kind of backed up from that a little bit, eliminated a few spots, and what you're looking at is kind of the newer proposal of pull-through slots. Before, they would have had to pull in and back into the slots. These would be pull-through and doing that, we think it's, you know, both, both plans would work, but we think that by eliminating a few, a few slots, we can do pull-through. We just think it'd be a cleaner, nicer, maybe more room for a more architecturally aesthetic, you know, and the night, maybe a nicer little park. But the plans are preliminary. We got to see elevation, lay it out, full dimensions, some things are probably going to change, obviously will change, but we wanted to get the proposal in front of you. It will be managed, uh, it will be managed and operated by the current owners and their staff out of the Audubon Restaurant and Hotel, so the people will park, you know, that pull in there will check in, just like the hotel guests do. When we have hotel guests staying with us, we are AAA rated in a hotel, and when we're, when you're AAA rated, you need to have staff member on-site 24 hours a day when you have guests, so there will be, that same person will be able to, you know, help the folks or if they, if they need be, um, on the RV park and the, and the hotel lodging. So, posing questions? Yes.
Do they own any, do you guys own any of the gravel there you down there?
Yeah, the property, the current property line goes, um, if you, if you walk down there, there is a, you know, right there along Market, uh, there is a yellow circle, Mr. Duckbader, uh, found those for us. There's a yellow circle around the pin in the, right along the sidewalk and it goes back and there's a stake with a yellow, I mean, with an orange flag on it, uh, backed by a pecan tree on those other side of the buildings. So to answer your question, it goes back probably, um, we didn't step it off, 30 yards?
Probably.
Probably 30 yards past the pavement. It kind of drops down a slope and goes back into the gravel parking lot. So, which, and then it adjoins the Sylvanus parking. So Sylvanus doesn't come all the way up to the property, the current property line, it goes back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These pull-through sites you're talking about, Mike, is this the area you're talking where you have grass and trees to that long line there with the arrow?
So what we, what we'd like to do is, and as you can see, it's going to have to be a very organized traffic flow area. Right now, people can pull into the parking lot from three different entry and exit points, you know, there's really no painted lines and stuff, so we're going to have to put together a very organized, one-way flow traffic. So to answer your question, uh, the east line, property line, is where the main road would come in that they, right now, that we plan on bringing them in there and then they can pull at an angle into their slot. So we're going to do as much as we can based on the area limitations to put, uh, shrubs, trees along the back property line that joins our, their property line with Sylvanus, and then also we hope to put in some, you know, shade trees along or in between each spot. So that, that's what the plan is. We'll see how it lays out. Yes.
Uh, Mike, I have a question that also relates to the zoning ordinance we're going to discuss this evening.
Okay.
Because that was part of your application or...
Yes, ma'am.
You guys proposed it.
Mm-hmm.
So what we're talking about this evening is strictly in C1, excuse me, I1, light industrial, but your application, uh, is stating that it's C1 and I1.
Right.
So...
So, um, perfectly honest with you, we were caught off guard by that a little bit.
Okay.
Just, just upfront, okay? So right now, until we, until we get it drawn out by an engineer and laid out, we think we might need some of the area on the pavement which, which would extend into commercial zoning. If we don't, we'd like to keep it back on the light industrial, okay? But there is a possibility, we lay it out, I know the, the picture isn't to scale or anything, the one that you have in front of you, but, um, right now, based on a, um, what did I put in there, 75 feet, you know, pull-through, that type of pull-through style would probably put the front of it right in, right into the line or just over the commercial line. Does that answer your question? So there might be a possibility, we might have to, we might have to do some, another zoning request. We really don't want to, don't know that, and I think it's best for us to lay the plans out and, you know, have them drawn out, see what we can fit, and then say, yeah, we really can't do this without needing another 10, 20, 30 feet, and then that way we know what the request would be to change the zoning.
Okay. But I'm not, can we approve a special use permit that includes C1 if that is not, if we pass this 4374 as written?
So what you can do is if you want to include that as part of your ordinance to change the zoning to allow it in C1 and I1, you can do that.
What if we don't?
What if we want to wait till they get done with their engineering and come back to us with what they're exactly going to do?
I'd like to see more detail of the planning.
Cause here's the...
Of dimensions and all that stuff.
Well, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, my, my point is that the I1 consideration, which is what went through planning and zoning, and they had a very long discussion about it, that I agree with, um, but if we're going to approve a special use permit that includes C1, that's contradictory to the, the proposed ordinance, correct?
But you would approve it as an I1, not a C1. You would approve just a...
So their special use permit, we need to take out the, the C1 portion of it.
In that same vein, first of all, I'm all for an RV park. I think we'd need to have them for a long time. I was hoping somebody would actually pick up on the levee area or the bio property down there to the east of Jurdefat, the reenactment, there's that whole field there.
Yeah.
That's where I was hoping somebody would do it. That's in my backyard and I support that. Um, my question, my concern is, as a Ward 1 alderman and person who lives there and someone who loves the Audubons, and when I dine there and I have my salmon, um, will I be looking out at RVs or will there, would there be a fence? Will there be an evergreen barrier? Will there be something separating us regardless of where this ends up? Will I have to look at somebody, uh, RV and will you have verbiage in your contract with these RVers that stipulates what they can and can't do? For example, are they going to be able to grill out? Are they going to be able to sit out and have their dogs and cats and everything else in your parking spot so that the downtown historic district, your patrons are going to see this kind of lounging around? Would you be willing to go into a contract with the city stipulating exactly what you expect your customers to do?
That concern or something to that effect came up at the planning and zoning by another, um, person, residence, and, and absolutely, to answer your question, I think that we have to have, um, some sort of rules and regulations, okay, that they would, that they, that would be posted on the website, would be posted in the brochure, you know, that they know when they're coming to the RV park what the rules, rules and regs are.
And for how long, right?
And for how...
Limited stay?
Absolutely, absolutely.
What is your idea of a limited stay? Just so I have it for the record. What is your idea of a limited stay?
We thought maybe seven days.
Could you have that in writing?
I don't think it would be that long.
Would that be, it is there? I didn't see that. Okay, I just got, I just got a high sign from our, our main man back there that said it's in writing, the verbiage is there. Um, you know, I'm a big, I'm a big landscaper.
Yeah.
Before you decided to go with this and you're probably thinking about this, I thought you were going to get some...
I'm going to get ahold of you.
Steel mag, I mean, some southern magnolias and stuff.
Yeah.
What else?
But to answer your question about, you know, um, because of the, because of the limited, uh, space, and if, if it's pull-through the way we have it laid out there, they almost, when they pull through, they're pulling out into the, the drive into the parking lot to exit onto Main Street.
Okay.
So to do that, to somehow have a landscaping that, that would separate the parking lot from them, I don't know that that's...
Or fencing or something?
Well, but, but, but my point is, is they have to, they have to, they're transitioning from the parking, from their parking, RV parking spot onto the parking lot to exit.
Okay.
So I'm not sure...
I would just ask that you, and I know you will, take that into consideration and think about the historic district, the national park, and your business.
And what it's going to look like.
What happens if you sell your business eventually and the new people get it and they want to do something completely different? Happy, is there something that we could put in the verbiage that says if it transfers to another person, the title, that the city has the right to get rid of this in case it goes amok or how's it? If you sell your property, what is the city going to be stuck with?
Because a special use permit would be no more.
Because it's only for the owners presently? Is that how? Thank you.
And special use permits can be revoked.
Given reason.
How long does a special use permit good for? I know that when I first was on the board, it was for like a year or two and now we've changed it. Do you know where we are now on that?
Special use permits travel with the property, the owner, unless written into terms and conditions.
So if we're good to go until they sell it or otherwise, we're good.
Correct.
Copy that. Thank you, sir.
Gary, we're talking about these RVs. I mean, these things are close to 12 foot tall as far as any fencing.
Yeah.
That would be...
I know, that's why we were talking about, I'm thinking more like, um...
Right.
Magnolias and evergreens. I'm all, I'm really, I know Buck, I'm all into landscaping, but there's a lot, St. Genevieve needs to realize, there's a lot of advantage to landscaping, which reminds me, Gary, I need to talk to you about a tree on Main Street. But anyway, thank you for your attention to this.
It's, it's a question for you and Dave. It, it's a procedural question, so in the drawing, I'm assuming he asks to fix a dump station.
Yes, and that again is preliminary. We're not sure if there'll be a dump station or if, the, just, you know, we'd like to just put in a sewer line and have hookup at each spot. That would be, that would be more ideal. It's just going to come down to cost.
So, I mean, above my head, but just a question more for Dave than procedurally, that washes through allowance to get approval or to make sure we don't overdrive, overtax a sewer?
I already talked with Steve and, uh, we're not sure which direction it would have to run, but yeah, there's capability there.
Okay, so I mean, but, but any kind of permitting goes through those folks so they, we have some kind of engineering stamp on this thing and we...
Yes, it would have to be stamped and engineered appropriately and up to all DNR respects.
Got you, got you. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mike, one concern I guess I have, you know, this being right down in the, the heart of the historic district and stuff, and of course, we've camped in numerous parks throughout the years and stuff. Um, I guess the openness of this is what concerns me and I'm kind of going along with what Gary, you know, talked about, how it would appear, you know, in town, because I've, I've been at some campsites and stuff and listened to RVs with generators run half the night because there wasn't sufficient power or whatever, you know, the situation was. Uh, and I noticed, I think it was in the planning and zoning notes, uh, you talked about sewer or if there wasn't sewer, you would send them to the nearest dump station offsite. Um, I don't know where there's a dump station in the county.
Hon State Park and the Rose Truck Stop.
Yeah, but if you send them out to Hon Park, you're supposed to be a paid registered camper and use the dump station.
Yeah, I don't know. We, we have, we didn't discuss sending them out to Hon or to, or to, I mean, um, either you have, either you have onsite dump or you don't, and that would be appropriately, you know, annotated on the website and, and, you know, they would know that ahead of time. When they go through their, when they go through their old RV brochures, it says exactly what your utilities are. So if we didn't have it, um, we wouldn't necessarily, I mean, would we know where the next closest one was? I guess we would, but the plan is to have, you know, dump site or sewer, sewer hookup onsite.
Bobby, maybe referring to the terms and conditions, what was written in was that either appropriate sewage, uh, facilities would be provided onsite or they would have to provide direction to where the nearest dump site is. That was written in by planning and zoning.
Or directions to, okay.
The nearest dump.
I guess that's what the conversation was in the notes from the previous meeting. Okay.
Have you really talked to the Heritage Commission about their feelings about this one or...
Um, I don't know that we have. Jim, did you? No?
And I think it's a great idea to have one. I, um, little question about this particular area. I know you guys already own it and stuff, but, um...
It's location, I think it's location, 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 and I, I keep trying to say, St. Genevieve is progressing towards national park destination, which we are. We're starting to really become something. The last thing we want is an eyesore, and I know you guys are class act. I love your hotel, I, I love your restaurant, so I'm just, I think, Buck, I think we're agreeing on this, Bob. If, if we do this, right, we have to have some guarantees it's going to be a class act.
Well, more details.
Right.
It's hard to vote on sometimes the kind of details.
Cause I'm not comfortable now until I know what it's going to aesthetically look like.
I agree, and how, how to enforce it from becoming a stereotypical wooden campus, campsite, you know, like...
Mm-hmm.
Campfires and generators.
Well, you know, campfire and stuff like that, that's all working style, but, you know, um, one of the, one call that I got, their concern was, um, campers that typically road-trip in the RVs to destinations like ours will have their pets. That's part of the ideal of having an RV is you can travel with your pets. Um, you know, those dogs or whatever will have to go out. Is there a plan for, uh, there's also sites for pets on there, um, how, you know...
I had calls about open containers, noise. Would there be a time when you actually said that you, it has to be quiet at a certain time? Cause remember, there's, it's residents there.
Yeah.
Well, we, we do have quiet hours with the noise ordinance.
But would they be enforced with that part?
We don't have quiet.
Well, not necessarily quiet hours, but...
There's a noise, there's a noise ordinance right now, but we would have them, we would have specific, uh, hours in the...
How about open containers?[1675.41]
out. Is there a plan for, there's also sites for pets on there? How, you know?
I had calls about open containers, noise. Would there be a time when we actually said that you, it has to be quiet at a certain time? Because remember, there's, it's residents there.
Yeah.
Well, we do have quiet hours with the noise ordinance.
But would they be enforced with that?
We don't have quiet.
Well, not necessarily quiet hours, but.
There's a noise, there's a noise ordinance right now, but we would have them, we would have specific hours in the.
Open containers, alcohol.
We have ordinances in place that cover all of that.
Well, okay, so that we wouldn't be giving leeway or a break to somebody who wants to have a beer or something outside their RV? These are things that we're getting calls about and this has only been like a week that this has been on the plate right now. So I'm just giving you guys a heads up.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of people only learned about it in this week's issue of terror.
Right.
Well, and that's why, that's another.
It was posted two and a half weeks ago in the paper.
Right. That's another reason why, and you bring up a really good point, is the fidelity and the accuracy, you know, what you're looking at is very crude at this point, okay? But with, with planning and zoning, having a meeting, with word getting out, just putting it that way, we felt like, we felt like we needed to bring something to the board sooner than later. You're, you are the ones that are going to be taking a lot of calls and asked a lot of questions. So I completely understand if you don't have what you need tonight to vote on it. I get it. But we, again, wanted to inform you as soon as we could.
Well, I just don't want you to think by questioning some of this stuff, I mean, that I don't support this.
Hey, there's a lot of things to talk through.
Right.
And it helps, it helps us too.
It just would be hard to vote for approval.
Yeah.
And now.
Thank you.
But I think it's a great idea somewhere.
Totally, totally.
All the concerns that I've been hearing, you know, they speak high praises of the team at Autobonds and what you all have done with the properties and businesses and they support the notion of having an RV park here. It all comes down to concerns of location, increased traffic of RVs through our tight streets. I know there's a discussion about signage. I have questions about how we enforce that. Without it being ordinance, could we issue a ticket if they don't follow the signage?
Then we also have concerns about, to make sure that our visitors know about the trestle that's on Main Street.
Right, that's what she's referring.
Because that will take their top.
Well, there's the trestle. There's making the turns when there's parking on the sides of the streets. There's going up Merchant Street.
Up over the sidewalks, like our eighteen miller's doing.
There's a lot of, yeah, you're, right. And very, very valid points. A lot of things to think about and discuss and, and believe me, we are all for feedback and trying to make it, make it, because we want to, we want it to be a class, class act also.
And we want the patients to have a great experience their first time, you know?
Right, right.
And so we want to make sure we have that.
We felt like, we felt like the, as far as getting, you know, in and out of town though, look, we got a, we got a National Park coming, right?
Yeah.
It's going to happen. Ready or not, it's going to, here, here they come. And what I mean by that.
We have tour buses.
Right.
Well, I was just going to say that. We're already taking, we're already taking tour buses. We're already taking food delivery trucks, semi trucks. So I think that piece of it, will there be an adjustment? Absolutely. We just need to decide if, you know, if a nice place downtown is what we want for, for our tourists that can come right to the heart of the historic district.
And with the idea of an RV park, we all agree we need one desperately. I, 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 we need one. But I just want to plant the seed in your partners' ideas, right, in your minds, right?
Absolutely.
There's a levy property that's a dollar a month or a dollar a year or something like that, that is east of the Jurdafet, that is basically good to go. And it could be screened out and it would help. And it's right nestled in where we have a farmer right now using it, right? So if you are serious about RV park, right, could I just encourage you to think about Front Street, the levy property that is adjacent to the Jurdafet, east of the Jurdafet? You would get more RVs, private, classy, and it's good to go. And you could probably get a contract for 20, 30, 40 years, whatever. So just, I want to plant that in your minds because the RV park is, yes, let's do it. But behind Autobonds or in Autobonds, yikes. I just, I just want you to think about that. Because it's there for you, I think.
I think I speak for that. It's there.
But there is times that it floods.
But will people be coming here to?
It don't make a difference. You put that kind of investment in, it goes underwater.
True.
It does flood.
But what's going to?
The lefty can break and we can break.
Right, we could flood, I could flood.
I understand that, but we know it floods.
Just, I just want you to think about.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
I just wanted, Mike, I just want to reiterate a few things because I know we're going, you know, either not or do vote on this later. In the zoning amendment, the description of an RV and an RV park that was written into that, if you want to go ahead and adopt that piece of it, it was RV park in an industrial or in an I-1 zone with a special use permit. So that's not granting one tonight. That's just giving the zoning amendment. There's a limit on how long RVs can stay there of 30 days. I think the Ferguson's and Fowler's are considering a smaller timeframe, but that's included in the definition.
30 days? My God.
That's typical for a state park.
That won't work.
So that's why that's included. State flood, flood plain management allows 180 days, just so that, you know, there's some perspective there. But whatever you guys want. And then in the special use permit, whether we do or do not grant it, we stipulated that the Autobond Redevelopment Group provides specific directions and provides signs for the city to install to guide the RVs down 61 St. Mary, Gavry, Front. Not through town, tight streets, parking on streets, not under the train trestle. So those, those are in here, in these documents. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Can, it seems like there's a certain unanswered question with the application. Would you guys agree to table this decision to a later meeting, I mean, on behalf of the applicant, with regard to the application for the special use permit to table it to the next meeting? Is there certain time requirements when we have a special use permit application? I don't want to advise them to deny it based upon the information we have now. And so I just wanted, before we close the hearing, I didn't know if you wanted to have them table it while you work out some of these details and you bring that back at a next meeting?
I would make a motion to table this, if they're agreeable.
I'm just asking.
But we could table it without their permission too.
The reason why we didn't really go through with the drawings and President did, we didn't want to waste thousands of dollars on drawings since you guys were totally against an RV park. So that was the reason why we just came up with these here. And to also answer your question about RV parking, it's going to be at the very back of the lot. Probably, probably you would not even, unless you really looked out the window while you're dining, you're probably going to see other cars in front of it because that's where our hotel guests and our, our restaurant guests park. The RVs are going to be at the very back of the lot. You probably wouldn't even notice it unless you really, really look.
Especially with the fence or landscaping.
Well, again, when we talk, I know, but when we talk about the pull through, it makes it difficult to put some type of fence.
But I think that maybe we could do more upfront where there's already some landscaping. Could make that look better, make that, give that some height. Now you're hiding the entire parking lot.
That's, that's what you got to do.
It is still aesthetically nice on the street, yes.
So we want it to look good also.
There's some things that we're going to, we're going to get with you on.
So would you be amenable to us tabling this until we get our ducks in a row? I, I don't think anybody on this board is disagreeing with the fact that we like the RV idea. We just want it to be classy.
I did have a question. So some of these RVs often have tow behind. Do, will the basing potentially accommodate a Class A and a tow behind? Or will there need to be a loading, unloading?
Well, they don't, well, we have the whole parking lot.
Exactly.
It's a good question.
And so they could.
But the depth that we have, the depth that we put in there as a pull through would accommodate those.
Accommodate those. Again, we're looking at the pull through, we're looking at another one on, on two directions.
Front to back.
Front to back. So again, we're anxious to, you know, we're glad for your feedback to help give us some guidance. And we put a lot of money, like I said at the last meeting, into the Autobonds that we're not going to put a rinky-dink little RV park in. I mean, that's, that doesn't represent the Autobonds putting something like that in. So whatever we do, it will be a first class act.
I knew it. I just wanted to make sure because I was nervous. I do live one block down from there too.
I know. One real English that I can do. To the paving that's there now, where does that come into?
This picture here?
Yeah.
You have a black and white copy, don't you?
Yes.
So, so this one right here, and I can go around, but it's right across where the dump, the dump station is sitting.
Right.
At the end of the pavement.
Okay.
So you can see that the blue lines, one through eight, if they extend up, it looks on here like about 10 to 15 feet onto the pavement.
Okay.
Okay? But again, that isn't to scale.
Right.
I mean, I did it as close as I could to the depth that I think that we need, but right now, these are about 10 feet on the pavement.
Okay.
That you can't see in your black and white show very well.
Yeah, it looks like it's right here.
Right. It's right, it's right across, right across here.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Yeah. And gentlemen, I just want to make sure that as neighbors and patrons, that you don't think that anybody, especially me, is against this. And I don't want you to spend a lot of money, but I'm, you, I need to register my concerns and the concerns of others in the community.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, thank you. And that's why we stopped at this here, but we've already contacted engineers to do the drawings and they're really working on them now. So we'll have a better, we'll get to table it at that point.
I do have one more question in reference to like the dump station. I'm a novice when it comes to camping and probably all my research has been in the last couple days. So with the dump station, you mentioned tying into sewer line. If you didn't do that, but still had one, I'm assuming it'd be some sort of tanks or?
It's mainly.
How does that work?
I need to be a sewer line.
Just need one sewer line set up.
Right.
Yeah.
The hose.
The one that's buried is a single one, but it can come up at each location.
And then with that, what is the chance of misuse spillage or anything like that? And who would be responsible for cleaning it up? And a timely manner?
We work with the Alliance for Water Resources to make sure that we're compliant with it.
Yeah, because with, with the, with the position of it right on Merchant Street, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know what the risk is of an incident like that or how common it is at other campsites.
Yeah.
But obviously it potentially would be needed from.
The concern I brought up earlier about this being in such an open space, you know, and all of the state parks we've stayed in and private campgrounds, they're restricted. You know, in other words, you have to go by, you know, some type of facility to get in or they're gated communities. Some of them are locked, you know, after a certain time. This being in an open area, you know, as far as somebody dumping something in, you know, an open line or something, or even the electrical being out, some kid riding his bike, I'm sticking his finger in there. Those. I don't think, I don't think that they're going to be, they're going to be turned off. I mean, we're not going to allow people to just come in and plug in and use our electric. This is, I mean, even in a dump state, not all parks even have, I don't think, dump stations.
No.
Not all parks. State parks may.
State parks can be.
But I'm just saying is that usually these units, they'll hold sewage for so many days. And as far as the generators go too, we're, we're going to have electric. So they're going to run off of electric. We're not giving them the choice of running off the generator.
They don't need for a generator at that point because they don't want to use their gas. And it's, and you're right, generators can be noisy.
Yeah.
They're paying for electric.
They're paying for electric. That's why you use it. There's a lot of, there's a lot of site rules and regulations that they're going to have to adhere to and we are completely open. If you've done some research lately or whoever, absolutely, give us some, give us some feedback on what you think would be important or.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, I've been at a campground before and people pull in late after your business is closed. Next thing you know, electric's not turned on, 90 degrees outside, they have a built-in generator or something, you know? All of those things, I think we'd like to see them all addressed.
Sure.
Yeah. We have somebody on property that will be there.
Right, because you're a class act.
And triple A approved and it has to be that way. So.
Gentlemen, how much time would you need to come back, without spending too much money? How much time would you need to come back with what I would call or describe as a better proposal? How much, if we were to table this tonight, how much time would you need?
I mean, I don't, speaking for myself, I don't need engineer drawings to make decisions. I just need a little bit more like X amount, roughly X amount of feet from, you know, size of spaces, rough draft of what your rules may be. Because we don't want to pass, I don't want to pass it and then, you know, approve it and then.
You meet every, yeah, right, right. You meet every two weeks, is that correct?
I'm just asking how much time you'd want to bring them back.
Well, I'm just, I was thinking three weeks, but.
Two weeks.
Is that enough time?
We can try. Again, we've got people working on, a couple of different guys working on drawings.
And if you needed more time, we're not, we're not monsters. We're willing to work with you. Because I want this to happen. So with that being said, would, would the board be amenable to tabling this for two weeks until our next meeting? So I make a motion to table this item until our next meeting.
We'll get to it after we close the public hearing.
We don't do that in the meeting?
No, we'll do that.
We've got it coming up.
We got it coming up.
Oh.
So if there's any more questions?
Thank you very much, by the way.
Thank you. At 7:03, we'll close the public hearing.
Takes us to whole business. Bill number 4369, ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending Schedule 3 parking restrictions, Table 3 E, anticap parking.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbuster.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4369 now becomes ordinance 4291.
Thank you. Bill number 4370, ordinance, the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, amending Chapter 600, alcoholic beverages of the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance as set forth below.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbuster.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4370 now becomes ordinance 4292.
Thank you. Bill number 4371, an ordinance, the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Motion approved.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbuster. Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4371 now becomes ordinance 4293.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. Bill number 4372, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the St. Genevieve County for the purpose of providing COVID-19 funding available under the CARES Act for eligible reimbursements, reimbursable expenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to bill number 4373, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arnold, Missouri, for the purchase of four sets of turnout gear in the amount not to exceed $9,108.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Listen for a second reading.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to second reading, bill number 4373, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arnold, Missouri, for the purchase of four sets of turnout gear in the amount not to exceed $9,108.
Motion approved.
Second.
A roll call, please.